Hello, everybody. I am Ken Falls Draft and you are seeing the second in a series of episodes I'm doing that are basically my campaign platform by topic for my candidacy for the Acton Agua Dose Unified School District Board of Trustees. Now, I currently hold a seat on that board. I am an elected incumbent. That's different from an appointed incumbent, but an elected incumbent that has served for six years or two terms in which both I was elected by popular vote. Now, you might be asking yourself, what is all this? Well, I did the kickoff video, which was called "School Board Insider: Secrets of Closed Session", the things that I can't tell you, but I did. And there is a link to that right up there, right about now. I explain who I am, what I am, all kinds of things. But the takeaway from that episode was if you're a school board member and you are either ignorant of process or a missionary, oh missionary, in your duties as a board member, when it comes to confidentiality and closed session, someone may own your house. That was the takeaway. Now, if you are watching this stuff 10 years from now, as I said in the first video, again, hover your mouse up there, there will be a link to the playlist at the end of the episode. But if you're watching this 10 years from now, you'll get the context that I am in a small rural district where we are conservative people concerned about and focused on our kids. So if you're not 10 years into the future and you're watching this in your local, you know exactly why I'm making these videos. You know exactly why I'm running. And you know that the topics that I'm throwing out there, the order that they're being thrown out there, and the topic matters themselves are certainly no accident. That said, again, if you want to catch up, hover up there. Now, I'm gonna put my glasses on so I look more intelligent. Is that working? You know what? I'll give you some more time to think about that. But the topic of this episode is board superintendent relationships, more so board member superintendent relationships. Now, relationships is defined as a connection between two or more concepts, two or more objects. And classically, what we think of is people. And the one I will tell you about that is probably first comes to mind when we're dealing with school board member and superintendent relationships is the kind of person relationship. And there are different levels of that. So, look, I am not a relationship expert. I'm not Dr. Ruth. I may look like Dr. Ruth, but I'm not Dr. Ruth. I guarantee you that. So let's talk about a couple of these relationships that we all know, or at least my perception of them. First, you have the marriage relationship. And you have people too, who work together and have an equitable relationship where they choose to stay with each other for a period of time because they're hopefully interesting and work better as a unit than apart. That's how I see it. That may not be how you see it, but whatever. But let's talk about that kind of relationship. You may see a couple in public and everybody's just going, you know what? They are the perfect couple. They might present that way, but when you get home, they might not be the perfect couple. And that may be why the dude has bruises and lumps on his head, or whatever. Let's skip all that mess. A board member and superintendent relationship can be that, just that. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. You know, there are some parameters to go with happiness in relationships, and that's mutual beneficially. The relationship is mutually beneficial. So let's say that you have a relationship in which someone is making all the money, and someone else is managing the home and the children and all of that. Now, if the person managing the money starts thinking that they're the most important part in the relationship and starts making arbitrary and linear decisions without including this person, this person can start to feel undervalued. That undervalue meant turns into, I feel threatened, I don't feel safe. So in that situation, you got somebody basically sending the message out, I make all the money, you are here, you're entirely dependent on me and my decisions. And yeah, you don't have to be a marriage counselor to figure out that one, right? That's the kind of relationship you do not want with a board member and a superintendent, in which the board member and the superintendent are kind of like, the board member is throwing power out there and the superintendent's like, oh, I really have to do what this person is saying. We're gonna talk about some legal ramifications of that here in a little bit. Next, you have, in terms of general relationships, you have parent-child relationship. That's an interesting one to me. I'm the parent of five children. And I think my success with them, especially the later ones, because when you have first children, they're like the guinea pigs of parenting. You're gonna fix everything that your parents did to mess you up, which is kind of like a theme of some new school board candidates, like, I'm gonna fix everything that can, I don't know what they are or what he did, but anyway, I'm gonna fix it. So if you're the kind of parent that all the way till 18 years old is giving arbitrary decisions and not including the child in becoming independent through decision-making, even sometimes making the wrong decision and coming out of it, learning things, and you kind of mentoring along the way. If you're kind of always have to be there and always have to be part of their decision-making process, don't be surprised when they leave for college and you can't be in the parking lot grooming the principal every day and giving the teachers cookies, that they're a little bit confused about what to do out there. So, board member superintendent relationships can be the same, where you've got this hovering board member that stops the superintendent from being able to perform. And again, that first episode up there told you a little bit more about that and the liabilities. You can go with that. Now, either one of those relationships with a board member and a superintendent is not healthy. Now, let's talk about another relationship most of us are pretty familiar with, and that is a business relationship, in which maybe I do this part, somebody else does this part, and we both realize, I may not like you as a person, the personality stuff, the emotional stuff aside, I do this part of the business, I'm really good at it, I'm not good at what you do. And I think that the business would suffer if you weren't here and you weren't here. I want you to relate that back to what a marriage might look like. So in that type of business relationship, when you have somebody thinking, okay, I'm the investor, I have all the money, you're over here doing all the work, and I devalue you because you are the laborer of it and I'm the money of it, the stuff falls apart after a while. Again, somebody's over here feeling undervalued and repressed, and you don't want that. So a good business relationship, you understand your role, you stay in your lane, you understand your role, you stay in your lane, and you communicate as to what that is, and you kind of evaluate from time to time and have open, honest communication. Married people try that, open, honest communication. And you kind of check where things are, and you really need to talk about in business where you're going, because if you're selling encyclopedias and typewriters and those little carrying cases, yeah, you're probably out of business. You gotta stay relevant in business. That is probably the best model that we can compare a healthy board member and superintendent relationship. Now, let's start at the beginning and talk about some things you might not know and how superintendents are found and put in place. Okay, if you are a good public agency, we just got done talking about a business relationship and even a marriage relationship, or even a parenting relationship, and whether there's some goals and some measurables where everybody can feel like, hey, I'm part of something great here. So in order for a school board, meaning the school district, to be successful, you have to have competence on the school board, number one. You have to have people looking at something and going, hey, we're all kind of headed the same way. I might be good at governance, I might be good at organizing programs, I might be good at operational efficiency. That doesn't mean I'm an educator. That doesn't mean that I know the culture of education, what curriculum looks like, how to stay relevant, and especially how to talk to somebody that's a young person, that's a student, that is not my child. I may be way out of bounds there. So you got a group of people coming together. And I did a video on what makes a school board member a good school board member. It's a campaign video, remember that. These are all campaign videos, remember that. And oh, last thing, disclaimer, because I am going to introduce a law book a little bit later when we talk about how people mess up and what that means to you, the taxpayer. Anyway, the disclaimer part, that was, that's where I'm at. I'm getting old. I'm Ken Falls Draft. I'm one board member. I'm not speaking about the board, the board's business is not a public forum. We don't have comments turned on below, so you can comment that I'm the best, or I'm the worst, and how do I feel about what this guy's doing. No, this is me telling you my opinion based on a lot of experience as a public sector employee myself and sitting on the school board here. Now, the last thing you want when you're looking for a superintendent is to just be like, hey, I know this dude, and yeah, he's cool, and yeah, I'm the most dominant board member, so I'll convince everybody else. So we go out and find our own superintendent, because those kinds of searches are usually about what I want and not what the taxpayer wants. You want to remember that elected officials, here's the way it works, in case you didn't know. Not everybody wants to go to the school board meetings and complain about me. Not everyone wants a career of running around on backdoor chit-chat or whatever app we're using nowadays to cuss me to build a platform for the next four years. Not everybody wants to do that. Some people, believe it or not, want to go into the ballot box and they want to put down a number of people that they think, you know what, I won't have to handle this. I can call them up every once in a while to keep them relevant and say, hey, I see this going on, I don't like it, or hey, I think you guys aren't thinking of this, give me a call. So when you're elected, that's what you're supposed to do. The underground school board, there's always one of those, they show up the first day when the superintendent says, oh, look at these cookies, here's some cookies for you, welcome. Do you like the cookies? Yeah, what superintendent's gonna be? No, I hate your cookies, stay away from me. Because the cookie trips start every day, every week, and then the next thing you know, you've got these people over here that think they're the school board. And we'll talk about that in another episode. That one's gonna be really juicy. You're gonna love that one, unless you're one of these people, sorry. Anyway, so you typically hire what's called a headhunter. That's somebody that goes out, they look for somebody based on some input they received. In healthy school districts, you have what's called a strategic plan, meaning we've sat down and we've looked at it, and for the next five years, these are the educational focuses, these are facilities focuses, and these are the policy and management focuses. In another episode, I'm gonna talk about the triangle that I see an effective organization being. And in this operation, it is policy and management down here, facilities and finance over here, and education up here. And there's a teeter totter in the middle of that triangle. If it tilts one way or the other, then education tends to suffer to top. I will talk about the educational triangle and effective organizational structure in another video, at least my concept of it. Anyway, so you have a strategic plan. You have a set of inputs. They might come from the public, what are you looking for a superintendent? You also need to recognize, where's the district at? Let's say we have a $10 million bond. That's a terrible thing to think about here or to suggest. People like to operate within their means here, and that is funding that comes from children attending school, and you get money for each student. So back to the first video I talked about, kind of hinted on what happens when people make decisions that turn into payouts and settlements and that type of thing. Those come out of the money that comes from the kids coming to your school. Anyway, back to the strategic plan. You may have a focus. And with that focus comes different types of superintendents. Some superintendents are HR people, they know how to manage people. Some are organizational structure people, growth-minded people. You have people that are building, have a great deal of building experience. If you are in the middle of a building, a bunch of stuff, and you have a superintendent that has a lot of experience with that, you don't end up with cost overruns and things like that, because they don't manage it. And then there are people who are just good at reaching the underserved kids that keep your district's scores low. I'm supposed to be using Chick-fil-A point. So, the strategic plan and understanding the district focus is what gives the headhunter the ability to look at the job description and say, here's what we're looking for, and here is what you need to do. Now, when the people come in, you would hope when you interview them that they are looking at the strategic plan. They're able to say, hey, my skillset fits to the strategic plan here, here, and here, and I see the scores being this, I see the facility rating be this, I see the Williams lawsuit ratings are this, and this, and this. I see that your Office of Administrative hearing caseload is low or high, and here's my experience of this. These are what you would call competent interviews, where you're looking at superintendent pool. Now, the headhunter will bring you those people and screen them to what your strategic plan and what your district focus is, hopefully. So when you pick a superintendent, it's not because you like them, it's because they are particularly suited to what your strategic plan says and where you are going. Okay, so we're at the point where we've picked a superintendent based on a strategic plan and known district focuses. By the way, a word on district focuses, any good governance body, city council, school board, has what's called an annual priority exercise. So we know what the priorities are, we know what the strategic plan is, and it's kind of back to that business relationship. Are we still selling encyclopedias in 1950? Are we moving ahead? Those types of things. And individual board members realizing that they are not the superintendent. This kind of goes back to the parent-child relationship. Listen, if you were a superintendent, you would be sitting in the seat, you would be making, I don't know, 150 up to, some of them make in excess of $350,000 a year. You would not be trimming trees, driving truck, or answering a telephone. Sorry. So if you're the subject matter, you're the superintendent. If you're not, you're there to represent the public, to make sure that taxpayer funds are protected, that you're avoiding liabilities, and that you are supporting the progressive education of children. See video one again. So superintendent comes in, they issue a 100-day plan or first 100 days. It says, here's what I'm gonna do, this is how I expect the board to perceive what I think the district is going to. And that becomes released to the public and it's measurable to the public. So at the end of 100 days, how are we doing? We have a healthy discussion, and we see where we're going, and where the actions of the superintendent are lining up with the strategic plan that was in place when that person got there. And in a healthy world, you revisit the strategic plan now and then, and you update it accordingly. And every year, the superintendent is reviewed against what they said they would do, what the performance measures are, and those are all based on the strategic plan, which is really tied to the LCAP plan in the background. And so we'll talk about the LCAP and what that means in a future episode. So it's a repetitive cycle. Now, sometimes, superintendents decide, like when I started on the board, I'm not the best at board superintendent relationships. I don't know why. I think it got in my head where the superintendent was sitting at the head of the district, resigned five minutes before I was sworn in as a board member. I don't know what that meant. You would have to ask them. But anyway, some superintendents are very specialized, like I said, and it gets to a point where they sit down with the board and they say, hey, guys, I think our goals have been met. I think that you are in a place right now where you don't need somebody paddling charter schools, you got that guy that came in to stabilize expectations and honesty, and the idea that kids could be safe on their own campus, and to take care of some HR issues, we got that done. Now, we need somebody coming here that's an educational champion that reaches the kids that aren't up there at the very top, because the ones that are down here, those are the ones you make the biggest gains in your scores and the reputation of your schools. And that's what people look like, look at when they come to think about buying a house in your area. Think about that, the reputation of your school. That was really, really important to me in my first campaign bid, reduce dependence on out-of-bound charters as a funding source, restore focus on local students, and restore the good name of the district and the greater educational marketplace. So you don't have everybody suing you, and now you've got colleges wanting to have college-level classes on your campus. So that's kind of, superintendents fit certain things. So the day may come where your superintendent goes, it's time for me to move on. I think this is a good focus. I've given you a good platform. Your strategic plan is starting to reflect something that's outside of my area specialty. And that is called normal, and it goes from year to year, and it's a very positive thing. It's an open, honest relationship with good communication. Okay, let's get to my favorite part, what this is really all about, what I was thinking about when I shot this video. Where does all this go bad? And I'm not just gonna use my opinion now. I'm gonna start digging into law books. This one, tort law by J. Stanley Edwards Juris Doctorate, i.e. lawyer. And it goes through every way that you could sue another person, and that's really where this is going. So, a couple of things I want to talk about. Quick way to get in trouble. One of my initiatives, when I got on the board, was we cycled the president every year. So everybody, if you're the president this year, you move down to the end of the row. That gives you a pretty good thing I call the bookends. The bookends. So you've got an experienced president down here, you've got a new president here, vice president, treasurer, board member at large. Now, as you move up, you kind of watch what's going on. And if you're a smart president, what you realize is, I'm here to conduct the meeting, review the agenda, and do the administrative parts. I shouldn't be the swing vote on things. I shouldn't be exercising dominion on down to others. So when you cycle through like that, it stays away from something that I call the unipresidency, because the board president deals with the superintendent the most. And if you're year after year, the same thing, it becomes really easy for someone who's in that captive relationship, for someone to say, I really only have to worry about the board president, because that's who I'm dealing with. And if I can keep that one person as the board president, the rest of the four are dismissed. And so when I came in, two things happened. Number one, you cycle every year. I was the board president. The year I was a board president, I had a priority, it was called the civility statement. That doesn't sound like a big deal, but where I work, it is a huge deal, because at the beginning of every city council commission meeting or liaison meeting, they read the civility statement. And within that civility statement for the Acton Agua Dose Unified School District are two really important things to me, number four and five. Number four is understand the district's policies and procedures. So that's a really good way of Ken saying, look, don't come in here. I've never seen you in a board meeting. You come in here on fire, you're all lit up in the garage, cussing me, second guessing me, hating me is not an effective platform. I'm sorry, if it was, there would be 50,000 people running for board. But no, put the time into attending board meetings and understanding what is there that you can do and not do. And the first big one was going back to closed session secrets. That's a big one. So next one was, respect the rich history of the district and the people it served before you. One of the things that's my pet peeve is people have councils and boards and things. And people come on the board like, oh, I'm the first one that's ever here, the sun has finally come out, I know what to do, and everybody before me, throw that away, I'm here now, you do what I tell you to do. Really? All that does is take things backwards. Acton Agua Dose Unified School District is the second oldest school district in the state of California. Acton was almost the capital of California. The mines that are very near to me were owned by the governor. Maybe that's why the mine over the hill is called the Governor Mine. Yeah. So in these hundred and plenty of years, there's been nobody on the school board that knew what to do until you came along. Wake up, please, wake up. So when you've got a unipresident and a lack of understanding of practical, know your place, you start becoming loose in your relationship with the superintendent. You start thinking, you're the person that makes all the money in the marriage, and you just need to do what I tell you to do, because your livelihood or your stability depends on it. Things go really bad there. Now, as you gain confidence in being loose, you lose track of things like, you know, we had a strategic plan. We have some goals to accomplish. We need to revisit those. You're looking for the business relationship again. Remember, the superintendent runs a school. You're over here doing this for free, and community accolades in the garage don't really pay that well, I'm sorry. So the board rates the superintendent. The superintendent is there because they're the best one to be there. The process showed that. So the first thing you say when you go after the superintendent is, you know what? Yeah, that 10, 15, 20,000, 25,000, in a big district, the cost for the headhunter, that was just bad, I threw it away, forget about that. I'm the know-it-all, I know what to do. Really? Is that really what you think? That's not called public service. Let's get to the part where this is, what this is really all about. And that is where things go bad. And by go bad, my definition is always, is someone placing the taxpayer at risk where there is a legal action, a settlement, and the settlement, the funding for that settlement comes out of the kids' funding. One by one, as they enter the door, 10,000 apiece here in 2022. Yeah, think about that. So I go out and do all kinds of stuff and let everybody know, hey, here's where we're at. We've got college programs, we've got all these maker spaces, we've got ROTC-like programs, all those kinds of things. And here comes everybody, but you end up with a quarter million dollar settlement, and the equivalent of 25 kids coming to your school just got thrown out the door, and plus, you still have to educate those kids. That's what really what legal exposure is about. So we're not gonna do Ken Lawyer Starter Kits opinions here. We're gonna go to, again, tort law by J. Stanley Edwards Juris Doctorate as our text here. Now, I want to talk about some things I've actually seen. So I want you to think about something first. You are at work, your department or your shop or whatever it is, says, we're gonna have the quarterly employee meeting, which means, okay, people that want, have concerns or suggestions, those all come first. So you got everybody there. And the owner of the company, or maybe the manager of your department comes out and says, hey, you know, Falls Draft, when I hired you, I thought you might be able to do this. That's what they say. Or I hung my hat on you. Or try this. You know, we stay on the superintendent back there. Right back to the closed session video. We stay on the superintendent back there. Here's my favorite one. Open session, you're up there saying, I could do a better job than the administrative team myself. So I'm a tree trimmer, kind of. People ask what I do. Never mind. I wear a suit to work, but I'm a tree trimmer. Think about that one. So I could do a better job, and I'm saying this in open session, I'm making these comments in an open session public meeting, where there are newspapers. in open session. I'm making these comments in an open session, public meeting, where there are newspaper reporters. Some of them actually write what's being said, all of it, and not skip some of it. But, or it's being taped by a media, and of course, it's being taped and aired on the school district website. So here's some basic law. There's a chapter in this book, I've given you a reference. It's called Chapter 13, defamation and related torts defamation. So in other words, I defame you. I might be a newspaper reporter. Now, there used to be this idea that newspaper reporters and the press were, if, hey, if you're in public office, I can just throw stuff out there at the wall. And yeah, that comes with the territory. Well, that's changing a little bit, and it changes a lot when this happens, when it's shown that you have an interest in defaming me or the superintendent or another board member because of its determinant later on, you wrote and published, publication means this. Bottom line. If I say to you, hey, I am not after you. Let's say you invite me to a coffee shop and you say something to me like, hey, Ken, I'm not really after you. I'm after that other candidate. That's not publication. Because I heard it. Now, I can feel, it might fit the definition of assault where I'm afraid of bodily injury. No, that wouldn't work. Imminent bodily injury, no. But injury to my ability to hold a reputation that could keep me employed, yeah, that kind of fits it. You don't have to touch me to assault me. Anyway, so we're sitting in a coffee shop. You request to meet me as a candidate, and you say something, I'm not after you. I'm after the other candidate. Again, that's not publication. But if you say that errantly, let's say a meeting is being recorded and you're whispering in the background, and we can hear it and identify that it's you or you're public, you're publishing it on a news media website or something like that. Yeah, that's all open game. And I can claim once you file that, well, you know what? This person defamed me. Now, let's get to the superintendent. You made those comments in open session to the superintendent. Now, when people get hired and they're doing the background, the headhunter's looking at things, they hopefully are taking a look at somebody's social media footprint. So 10 years down the road, the superintendent is applying for another job, maybe with the state of California Department of Education, very promising candidate, and somebody pulls up and stumbles across that, one of those board meetings I'm talking about and says, wait a minute, one of your board members was saying, hey, I hung my hat on you, or we're on this person in the back there, or I could do a better job myself. You know what? Those things are bad. 10 years from now. But let's talk about what they mean right now. A superintendent is hired to follow a measured plan. That's the strategic plan. That is the priority exercise of the board. Everybody knows where we're going. Everybody knows how the superintendent is evaluated. And suddenly you come out there and start spewing it out like you're the end all be all of the evaluation of superintendent. And let's say the public hears that. And let's say the public uninformed goes around and starts to talk about that. And they really believe what you're telling them because you are an elected official. At least you're representing yourself that way. Of course, they don't know that you didn't go to governance training. They don't know what's going on, and some of us can't tell you. But at the end of the day, confidence in superintendent starts to wane and gets to the staff level. So that sets off a chain reaction that nobody wants, believe me. The staff members start looking at the superintendent saying, you know what? The board member doesn't appreciate you, or they just defame you right out in open session where people are recording and newspaper, people are writing in the newspapers, right there. And that's, that fits publication. So the superintendent can look at all this and say, you know what? Somebody has undermined the plan. Somebody has hijacked the focus of the board and its priority exercise, the strategic plan, and we're way off out in the weeds, and I feel like I have to be responsive to this board member. And this is just like a bad marriage where somebody is repressed. And, and you're basically using your, your position and the color of your office, and it affects people's livelihood. So at some point, the superintendent can say, hey, you know what? This is so far gone that I'm just getting beat up here, and I have publication of your slanderous statements, your libelous statements, and I have evidence that you're interacting with staff. By the way, that is the next topic. It's going to be nice. It's going to be juicy. Trust me. Board member, staff relationships, where somebody is going around the superintendent and working staff at the sites or at the administrative office. We're going to talk about that. So we're going to be increasingly referring to this book. But let's talk about the next chapter related to board member conduct, like I've described, vicarious liability. So superintendent comes along and says, I've got two years left in my contract. This person slandered me, and I need to make this right. I have evidence in the newspaper. I have tapes of your statements. And also, most people don't know of this. The board cannot release the performance evaluation superintendent. The superintendent is free to do that. Go back in and say, this board member, in addition to doing this, was giving me low scores and all this, and it turns into a mess. Okay, so there we are in closed session again. This time, the attorney is saying, yeah, it's our recommendation that you buy out the superintendent's contract. In addition to that, there needs to be some type of statement made to the public that, yeah, there was some misconduct or something like that that led to this. So the superintendent does look like a whistleblower that goes after public funds by filing frivolous lawsuits. And yeah, that type of stuff even has come into public education. I'll leave that to another day. But here, here's what happens. Of course, we can't talk about it again unless you're one of those board members who just runs out and does whatever you want and, you know, hides behind the guise, well, I've never had any training. Well, if you don't know what to do in closed session, you shouldn't be on the board. And referred to episode one, right? So at that point, I've had enough of this. And this is all theoretical, right? This is, none of this has ever happened. And I go back to my little beginner's starter kit guide to being a lawyer, vicarious liability. And I say, hey, you know what? What's the evidentiary chain on this? What's the evidentiary chain? Well, board member said this, board member wrote this, board member did this, and blah, blah, blah. And the ratings on the superintendent's evaluation, la, 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 la. And so I start looking at what board policies are and what law is. And then I start saying, hey, you know what? This board member, way out of line, way out of line. So yeah, part of the settlement is, and you might have heard me say this before or not, that I vote no on the settlement, that I want the settlement to go forward where people understand what's going on by name. And then I turn around and seek recompense on the part of the taxpayer. And what that means is that on behalf of the students of the district, I hope that my fellow board members, of course, that wouldn't include the ones that are involved in this, are going to vote to send the attorney after the board member or members that caused all this. And when the lawyer says, well, no, that wouldn't be a good idea. You wouldn't want the public to really know about this. This isn't good for the reputation of the district. Then I can roll my eyes and go, yeah. And then people out there wondering, why every year we get a different this and a different that? You guys are good with math, right? So at that point, I just resigned from the board and I filed a class action lawsuit against the individuals, myself and their associates. On behalf of the students of the district who are losing their educational funds to this kind of behavior, that never happens. Just remember, kind of shedding light on my thought process. And in 10 years from now, when you're thinking about running for a board, again, it's far beyond you being popular in a garage when everybody's had a couple of beers and you're starting to cuss me a lot. Okay? So, hey, last thing, again, guitar shop. I'm comfortable in here. I'm fixing to go back to work in here. The first episode, we were actually going to make some shellac. Yeah, that's a violin up there, right up there. We're going to make some shellac out of the amber that flows out of a certain type of eucalyptus tree over here. And we made that shellac. And the amber is really red, and it produced this really nice orangey, tannish shellac. And I'm going to put that on a guitar next. So hey, I'm going to have a relaxing afternoon in my shed and wind down building a guitar. And you guys do the same. And when it comes the day for you to vote for me, again, like me, don't like me. But I'm guaranteeing you, I am watching your taxpayer dollars because they certainly don't go far enough the way it is without all kinds of, whatever this is. Anyway, I'll see you soon, and my next episode will be about board member staff relationships.